The special city council meeting scheduled for Monday, March 31st at 6:00 PM is now in session. Present are President Charbonneau, Councilmember Manette, Councilmember Touche, Councilmember Finnegan, our Clerk-Treasurer Johnson, we have a couple of department heads in the room, Tom Bernier from Department of Public Works, Mike Brown from the Rec Department. Did I miss anybody? That's everyone. And I think we're ready to begin. And Rick Upperchase, Mayor. So, let's go through additions and deletions first, shall we? President Charbonneau, do you have anything that you would like to add or delete from the agenda this evening?
I don't know.
Mr. Touche?
No, thank you.
Ms. Finnegan? Okay, I have two items. I've been asked to add a request for approval from the Department of Public Works to purchase a trailer for moving heavy equipment. So, I'm going to recommend that we add that. Let's see. Let's make that item number, a new number six. So, before the approval for Rec Department summer staff hires. And just to keep things neat and in order, could I have a motion to add that item as an item number six to the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second, motion and a second. Any comment or question from community residents? Hearing none, any from other council? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then a second is an addition of a license that I recommend we go ahead and take tonight, even though it was, just came to me over the weekend. It's actually for two, both from NEK Vapor. One is a, these are renewals of a tobacco substitution endorsement. And the second is the tobacco license. And with your approval, you all have it in front of you. I'd like to just add that to the consent agenda. I have a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment or concern from the community? Hearing none, any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The NEK Vapor, two items will be added to the consent agenda. And that's all, I think that's all I have to add tonight. I'll let that go by. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Your consent agenda has in it approval of the minutes from 3:17 and 3:20, AP warrants for 3:07 and 3:21, payroll warrants for 3:06 and 3:20, and now the two requests from NEK Vapor for permits. So, I'll just let you, I'll pause there. You all have had that information, all except for the NEK Vapor requests for the weekend. Are there any questions or concerns about what's in the consent agenda before we take action on it?
I'm going to abstain from that portion of it relating to the minutes because I wasn't at the table.
That's fair. Okay. So, let's, let's just take a motion to approve the consent agenda then.
I'll make that motion.
Great, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any comment or concern, question? Hearing none from the community, anything further from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye with the caveat.
Got it. And Jim, if you could note that John Manette is not voting on those minutes that he was not present for. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a letter of resignation from the Planning Commission from John Manette. We've had the letter, it was part of the packet that was published for the community. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation from John Manette from the Planning Commission.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. I'll just pause there and ask if there's any comment, question from the community? Hearing none, any further action from the, or conversation from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Let's do it again.
I unplugged it too, I think. I'm just letting you know.
Okay, we're just gonna keep assuming that people are gonna speak up. Turn that off so we don't have to, like... So, there's a second request here and I'm just gonna ask, John, if you'd like to speak to it, the request about changing the number of members of the commission for our, for the council to consider.
Sure. The commission had discussed the issue a number of times over the last several months. And the thought was simply to return the commission to its historical number of five, an odd number from its most recent number, which is six. Couple of reasons for that. One, to have a tiebreaker, obviously. And two, it adjusts the quorum in that a quorum for a five-member commission is three, but a six-member commission is four. So, we've, we have had occasions when we've barely made our quorum with a four-member, four-member board. And with a five-member commission, that would leave one vacancy to fill.
Given your resignation, meaning there are four currently now.
Correct.
And we could take one more.
Exactly.
Any questions from the community before we put a motion on the table? Hearing none? Somebody want to make a motion at the table?
I'll make the motion.
Great, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, it's been moved and seconded to reestablish five, a five-member participation on the Planning Commission. Any further conversation from the council?
Is that also kind of the, how do I say this? The feeling of the other members remaining on the Planning Commission as they support this?
I believe so. I think I saw Dennis Chanat here, he certainly could comment.
Any comment, Douglas?
No, no comment. We can discuss it. And traditionally, it has been five. It works better that way and I'll leave it at that.
Excellent.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Still with us, Jim?
I'm with you.
All right. We'll be pretty quick tonight. All right, the next one also was in the packet. We have a letter of resignation from the DRB from Andrew Touche. So, I'll just entertain a motion to accept that letter of resignation.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. So, I'll just turn to the community. Any questions or comments about that action? Hearing none, anything further from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, that motion passes. Great. And I'll just say, I understand there is interest with the DRB in having a similar conversation about adjusting the number of folks on that. And I've asked that we have something written. I'd like to warn that appropriately so that the community's not surprised by it. So, I've said that we're open to that conversation, but that we didn't want to take it tonight at the last minute. Okay, we have a new number six regarding the purchase of a trailer. So, I'm gonna ask Tom Bernier to go forward and just describe what's going on with this one, please.
Thank you for allowing me to do this. It's kind of late coming in. This is kind of a critical piece of equipment. And with a four to six week wait time, I really wanted, wanted to move on it. Late memo I wrote to, our current trailer is a 1983 that has seen its fender days and is no longer safe to be on the road and get inspected. So, we sent out some bids. The two bids we got was one from Derby, from Champlain, and the other one was from Kentucky. And you were asked why? Well, the, most big trucks and trailers run hydraulics off the back. They have hydraulic brakes to the trailers and whatnot. This is all electric. We don't run hydraulics in the back of our dump trucks. So, the specific trailer we were looking for, there weren't many out there. As you can see in my memo, Champlain was the cheaper bid, but they bid a trailer with fender wells at seven feet wide. My excavator's seven and a half feet wide. The trailer we spec was a complete deck over, which has no, no fender wells on it. And it's eight and a half feet wide, gives us six inches either side to the lags of the excavator. That price was delivered to us from Kentucky. So, I was hopefully asking to see if I could get approval. As I wrote in here too, that truck, that trailer moves the excavator, which is used for Public Works water and sewer. So, we'll be splitting that three ways. And I will be able to absorb that in my current budgets to make this happen. Otherwise, I have no way of moving my excavator.
That is the fiscal year '24-'25 budget.
Correct.
We'll be able to absorb it.
And as I wrote in here, I didn't, I didn't put in the capital because I wasn't aware that we had a major malfunction with it. So, otherwise, I would've put it in the capital and it would've been a planned purchase. But it's kind of a necessity.
Any questions from council for Mr. Bernier?
Tom, I've got one. What is it going to, what would it cost the city if we were to have that moved by a contractor?
A contractor? Well, we just moved, we just moved a truck to Chittingon County and it's 600 bucks one way just to move one an hour and a half. So, probably a couple $300 every time I want to move it. And the question is, can you get somebody when you want to move it? It's either that or I'm walking it and it's, that's not really the best way to move that excavator around, so...
I understand.
Yeah, I thought of that, but there's not a lot of guy, and once everybody gets busy, they're gonna be busy. I'm not gonna be able to move it.
There, you're gonna be at there, Mr....
Yeah, thank you.
So, if it's, if it's the council's pleasure, we'll put a motion on the table and then see if there are community questions.
I'll make the motion that we approve the recommendation from Tom to go with the Boyd Truck Centers Econoline Trailer.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. So, Tom, stay right there for just a moment. And if you just stand at the microphone for a minute, even though it's not working.
Okay.
Follow form here. Yeah, but I turned it off.
It's sort of a nice number to split things three ways, but I'd really like to know how, what is the percentage that you use the, you will be using this trailer for Public Works? And what is the percentage you will be using it for water? And what is the percentage you will be using it for sewage? Because the way you're splitting it, it will be 66% in water sewage and 33% and we'll go, we'll come out of the general fund. And that, that's common. And I just wonder if you're really considering in all the instances where you use that breakdown, how much really it's being used in one place or the other?
Well, short answer is, we don't, I don't track the hours on the excavator. Quite honestly, we probably use it for water and sewer more than we do Public Works. But we do have stormwater or roads that we use the excavator on. So, again, I don't track the hours of it per se. But since I run three different departments and they all utilize that piece of equipment, it just makes sense to split it three ways.
Thank you. Other questions from the community? Yes?
Real simple, can you just clarify, what is the brand of the trailer? What is the company and what is the bid price that you're gonna accept?
I can answer that. So, it's a Boyd Truck Centers, they're out of Kentucky. And it's an Econoline DP1225TE 12-ton tilt trailer.
12-ton?
12-ton.
12-ton.
Paul, there is a, there's a packet available to you if you'd like it up right here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that has the description.
And the cost was $24.9.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further comment or question here at the table? Hearing none, all those in favor of a motion to approve the bid from Boyd Truck Centers for an Econoline 12-ton tilt trailer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, our new item seven is approval for Rec Department summer staff hires. I'll just remind the community that several months ago, I can't tell you exactly when, there was a council decision that in the absence of having a city manager on staff, council would make final decisions on hiring and firing for all city staff positions. And so, Mike, the Director of Public, of the Rec Department, has put together a list for the council's consideration of potential summer hires. We're gonna take this in executive session because there are folks who are on that list who haven't yet been told that they're being offered a job. And there are others who probably haven't necessarily told other employers that they might be taking a job. So, it does have some ramifications for the folks who are on the list. So, I would be willing, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to enter into executive session for approval for Rec Department summer staff hires as per 1 VSA Section 313A3.
I'll make that motion.
Great, we have a motion and...
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, we are in executive session. We are back in session. I'm sorry, I don't have to say that. Executive session is closed and no action was taken. So, I'm open to a motion. Somebody got a motion for us?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the applicants brought forth by the Director of Recreation. There's nine of them, seasonal employees, of new seasonal employees.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I'd be surprised, but if there's any comment from the community, we're happy to hear it. Okay, hearing none, any further conversation that you all would like to have as a council?
Somebody online is reporting that they can't hear us, which is interesting, so...
Let's test it for a moment. Let's see. Felicia and Joseph, if either of you can hear us. Uh-oh. Are you still plugged in?
I'm gonna unplug and you plug it in.
Okay, let's test it again.
Oh, wait. Now, test it.
Okay, can we test, testing now? The owl's not plugged back in.
I think it is. Oh, she's getting there. The breakout runs.
You can't use your camera because it's not turned on. Just try to go. All right, let's see here.
Oop, oop.
There you go.
They still can't hear us?
We can't hear our own.
Is it the breakout runs or... Felicia, hello?
What is going on? Here, let's plug it in on this side, just see if it's the USB port. Thanks for your patience, everybody, which I'm assuming.
No. Oh, that was interesting. It's knowing the microphone, but the speakers. If we leave this meeting, they get picked out, right?
Yes. We can't leave the meeting. Okay, Felicia and Joseph, can you hear us now?
Try, do you think I'm again?
Okay, y'all, I'm testing one more time.
No, that's so strange. Because this is the microphone and it's not...
What if we unplug the owl and try without it? Just use it without the owl. Go back to...
Do you guys hear us now?
All right, this is it. This is our new plan, we're going with this, okay? You get to look at Carter's pretty face. Congratulations. I think I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations for nine new seasonal hires made by the Director of the Recreation Department. And a second, right? Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. And you can swing that toward you or John for the next part here. Item seven is initial reports from special task forces. And so, we're gonna ask John Manette to give us a report first on the Water and Sewer Task Force.
Okay. So, we met Thursday night last week. We're planning to continue to meet regularly on Thursday nights for the next several weeks to address the immediate issue, which is whether and to what extent an increase in rates should be recommended for either water or sewer or both prior to May 1st. We had essentially a pretty open, round robin type discussion of issues in terms of trying to, trying to get a handle on what the issues actually are. And I think we have a pretty good outline in terms of the information that we need, reports and so on, that we need from the city. And we have a couple of people that are analytically inclined on the committee, more so than I am. And they will, they seem to be eager to dive into the details. So, that's, that's pretty much where we are. Hopefully, we'll start coming up with some historic reports and numbers for them to get into this week.
And so, those meetings are happening on Thursday nights at, where did we leave them? 6:30?
The first one was at 7:30, chosen by me because of the schedule conflict. The next few are going to be at 6:30. I know that for the one on the 24th, I think it is, I have a schedule conflict again that would need to push it back to 7:30. But sure, for the next few weeks, we're looking at 6:30 here, Thursday nights.
Great, okay. And I'll continue to warn those meetings at least 24 hours in advance. I'll try and do them by Tuesday nights for a Thursday night meeting, so at least 48 hours. Any questions, comments from members of the community about the Water and Sewer Task Force in particular? Go ahead, Lori.
I just wanna say I was at the meeting and I was very impressed, I think it went well.
Thank you. Me too. I thought we had a good group of people around the table. That's great. Okay. So, Carter, can you give us a little report on the Financial Reporting and Fiscal Practices Committee?
Sure. Sounds like really similar. So, we met initially, it was 4 o'clock here. Moving forward, the Task Force around Financial Policies and Practices will be on Friday at 4 o'clock, so come join us to kick off your weekend. But it was really productive. Everybody shared their background and their strengths where they will be able to help analyze and dive into. Lori's in the room right now and she definitely has experience with translating systems and analyzing data. So, there's just a number of people though. I was really impressed with the different backgrounds and how that will kind of all fold together. Similarly, we were just mainly digesting what the task is in front of us. Rick was excellently walked through a lot of the scenarios. And Pam also recorded it, so if you are curious, it is on NEK TV.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, thank you.
Hot off the press tomorrow. And, but yeah, our main thing is figuring out what system, what data, what numbers we are actually looking at and trying, our goal of getting more accurate reports out. And we have, we named a few people that we can connect with and have support within, within our community, but also like statewide, so there's some people in VLCT that will be really helpful. And Jim has just been an incredible resource throughout that meeting and going forward as well, so... Yeah, so we're, yep, meeting on Friday. There'll be a virtual option because of me, so if you want it done that way.
So, when I warn it, I will warn it for, that one will have a virtual option as well.
And I should just add, the Water and Sewer Committee meeting was recorded as well and I don't know when that's going to be on.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I just want to pause there and without implying in any way that Pam has made a commitment to keep this up ad nauseam. It was really fabulous to have Pam there and tomorrow you'll be able to take a look at that if you'd like to. And I think, Pam, you're hoping to be there this week, is that right?
I'll be there this week.
Okay, great.
I don't want to record it.
There, it was, I thought it was very frank, open, it was extremely frank, open discussion, so...
That's why I don't want to record it.
That's right. So, I just want to express my gratitude also to John and Carter. I thought it was a great start. So, any comments from the community about the finance team in particular? Okay, any questions from other members of council? All right. Hearing none, thank you very much, both of you. Friday's at 4:00. Gotta, gotta love living in Newport.
Yeah, Carter was braver than me. I didn't dare to schedule Friday meetings.
I didn't have it on my calendar. Yeah, we all do have, yeah.
Love it. All right. Our next item is, we've got two that I'm gonna ask Mike to just come join us at the table because I think he's the one, the best one to guide us through these. The first one is the applications for parade permits. Mike, feel free to just pull up a chair, cut a catty quarter here, maybe toward me so that the camera can see you.
I don't know what the camera wants to see.
I got it.
It's better than this side, so I'll turn.
So, Mike, if you could just walk us through the four parade permit applications first and then we'll...
So, we have four requests. The city traditionally funds four parades. So, you've got Memorial Day Parade, the NEK Pride Parade in June, Kingdom Swim. I think you're, you have this memo in your packet which needs to be corrected. It says, the letter of intent with no application. The application has arrived and Jim does have it. And the Light Up the Night Parade in December. That's what we have.
And were those the...
Those are the only four.
Those were the only four requests.
Excellent. I love the one that happens.
It's pretty easy.
So, let's, if there's a motion to put on the table, then we'll hear it from the community if anybody has something. We can do all four of these at once, I assume, don't you think, Mike?
Make a motion to approve these parade permits.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. So, any comment or question from the community? Yes, Douglas?
When is the Kingdom Swim parade?
Date, you have the date in your head, Phil?
Yeah, Friday, July 25th.
Any other comments or questions from the community? Okay, anything further from the folks at the table?
All four applications met, all the requirements.
Yep. All checked.
And you're gonna, you guys were, I assume that you guys just let the other department heads know?
They all sign it. Yeah, yeah.
I see that. Just a reminder to them.
Yes. Yeah, we'll let them know that they're approved now.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to pass, to approve all four of those applications is passed. Thank you, Mike. All right, so now, I think you've got new information you want to share with folks. Not what was in our packets, it's been updated over the weekend about the coin drops.
For you, just updated information.
Thank you, Philip, Pat, Felicia.
I'll leave extras here. So, this is different than the one in your packet. The August and October, the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary was approved in February on the consent agenda. The rest of them were in the city manager's office, so some went downstairs, some went across. So, this is all of them together. The disabled American veterans, they requested a mid-October date, which was already given to the American Legion. So, I just put them down as November 1st, the first Saturday of November. So, that's what we have, we have seven requests.
Can you just say them out loud, Mike, for folks who...
So, we have the VFW, we have the Recreation Department, so the VFW in May, Recreation Department in June, the Fire Department in July, the American Legion in August, the Rec Committee in September, the American Legion Auxiliary in October, and the Disabled American Veterans in November. And those were the seven requests, so they all got no splitting this year.
Okay, any, let's get a motion on the table first, actually.
I move to approve the seven requested coin drops.
Thank you, John, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns from the community residents? Okay, hearing none, anything further from the council?
Do I need to just acknowledge that I'm on the Rec Committee for this vote?
You can acknowledge it.
I was acknowledging it, but again, it's the fundraiser for the committee, so I just want to make that clear.
I'm also a member of the Firefighters Association, which is in July.
Okay, great.
Okay. Appreciate the disclosure. I don't think it represents a conflict.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to approve seven applications for dates for coin drops is approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, you may remember, it feels like a long time ago, but it can't have been very long ago, when we did all the appointments, we did not take action on an appointment for a representative to NVDA or NVEDD. And we didn't do that because I had written for clarification to Dave Snediger, just asking about what the responsibilities were and what the practice was. I did receive clarification from him. We do not need, we can name two people as representatives if we wish to NVDA, but it's not required. The request was that if whoever we name, they'd like it to be real. They'd like that person to show up for their meetings, which I believe are monthly. And NVEDD is kind of an ancillary, like being on one, kind of you can resolve the second one. And so previously, Mayor Sullivan was serving as the representative. I'm more than happy to do so unless there's someone else on the council who would like to do so. So I'm happy to hear a motion to appoint either me or someone else to express interest if you'd like.
I'll make the motion to appoint yourself or to appoint, to appoint you as the representative.
Okay, I have a motion to appoint the mayor as the representative to NVDA and also NVEDD. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any community resident comment, question or concern? Any desire from council to name a second person or are we okay with one?
Kevin?
Love it. Okay, any further comment? All right. All those in favor of that appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. I will be the representative to those two organizations then. Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. I'm looking forward to it, actually, to learn more about NVDA's work. All right. Time for public comment. What do we got? Ann is our person to give public comment tonight.
Just a reminder to think about voting on that water and sewer budget because the Water and Sewer Committee is relying on the information that's in next year's budget. And that's not been voted on. Thanks.
Thank you for the reminder. John, I just asked if you could highlight that and kind of put it with the water and sewer agenda. We can, we can talk about that and then bring a recommendation back?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great. No other public comment? Seeing none? Speaking of records tonight, we're going to get out of here. There are a few items, I think, for new business. Let's just run down through. I'll start with the president of council. Kevin, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Nothing new? Carter, anything you'd like to add under new business?
I was going to touch on the NECA thrift store effort. I don't know if they have spoken to you.
Can you speak up?
About what? Okay, sorry, yeah.
My mic, her mic's here and my mic's way down.
All right, all right. I wanted to speak just to highlight the efforts. It's a volunteer effort. So if you're willing and the sun's interesting, please find their Facebook page. But Seymour Thrift Store, which is a thrift store that NECA operates, they had to close due to basically shuffle of funding from the federal government, so they had to close it. It's still operating as a place with the voucher program, so people can still go in that are enrolled with the NECA to visit and get clothes and whatever they need. But it is a really cool community asset, not only just like a storefront, for so many reasons. I used to, I love shopping there. It reduces our waste. It makes things really accessible and affordable. And some, and it was always semi-volunteer run. But now that group is just, has more of a fire under their belly and they're wanting to reopen. So if you have any interest or availability, they're accepting all sorts of help, whether you're just in the back sorting, folding, categorizing. Or if you're more friendly and you want to be up the front at the desk, or not the desk, the, um.
Counter.
Thank you, counter. So they're moving and wanting more support. They, I think they're a pretty good group, but again, just, just trying to put it out there and I think it's a really neat, you know, very Vermont movement.
I did meet with four of the representatives this afternoon during mayor hours and we're working on some specific things we might do to help them get started again. Andrew, anything you want to add under new business?
No, thank you.
Okay, John?
No, thanks.
Jim? Okay, and I have nothing under new business either. So moving on to old business. Jim, let's start with you because I know you've got at least one or two things.
Yeah, a whole petition in for the election on May 6th.
Okay. Are you at liberty to?
Yeah, I can tell. I was thinking, I was going to say nay, so I forgot. Yeah, it's Mr. King, Mr. Manette and Mr. Ortiz.
Okay.
The only three.
Three petitions that are, that have been turned in.
Right.
That's for the special election to be held on May 6th.
I warned it, the meeting today. I sent you an email about getting it on the website.
I got it and I will see that it goes up this week.
And I got all the ballots tomorrow. Hopefully, they'll be here in a couple of weeks where we can, people want to vote absentee, they can vote.
Great. Thank you. And then, do you want to say something about dog licenses, Jim?
Yeah, dog licenses are due tomorrow.
So.
So if you have a license to your dog, please come in and do it.
Okay, so dog, the date is April 1st for the dog licenses.
Correct.
Get those in tomorrow.
Been pretty busy the last week, but I'm sure there's still more out there.
Kevin, anything you want to add under old business?
No, thank you.
Okay, John?
No, thanks.
Andrew?
No, thank you.
Carter?
No, thank you.
Okay, and under old business, I'm not sure if this belongs under old or new, but I'm just going to name it here. I'll just let you all know that tomorrow, Andrew and I and Dave La Force and Brian Gray from Newport Downtown Development will be going to Montpelier for two meetings. One with Wanda Minoli, who is the commissioner for the, for BGS, Building and General Services. That will be at 11 o'clock. And then at noon, we'll be meeting with the governor. And I think Mike Marcott, Woody Page, Russ Ingles will all be present. And there will be a number of people from the governor's cabinet there to meet with us as well. Basically, just talk about the development plans that we have in mind for Newport and to try and figure out how the state can be a supportive part of that process. So that meeting will take place at noon tomorrow in Montpelier.
Good luck.
Thank you. No, no, that's a closed meeting. We made it available to anybody on council who could go. We were going to say anybody who can go and then we were going to draw straws because we don't want to violate the open meeting laws. So it will be just Andrew and myself going because Carter, John and Kevin were not available to go tomorrow. All right, I don't think there's anything else on my mind. So I'm going to move us to setting the next meeting of the council, which will be the regular meeting to be held on Monday, April 6th. That date is wrong on the agenda. It's supposed to be April 7th because I had it wrong in my head. So Monday, April 7th at 6:00 PM. And as we make a motion for that, I want to include in that motion a request for approval for Chris Vaschan to be present physically here in the council room and at the table to run technology because both Carter and I will be away.
What?
And I didn't want to leave the rest of this crew defenseless. So, so let's, I, I will ask for a motion to set the next meeting of the council to be the regular meeting on April 7th at 6:00 PM with Chris Vaschan present at the table to run tech. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment, question, concern from the community? Hearing none, any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I like that motion.
At what time? 6:45. Motion to adjourn at 6:45. I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I got three seconds.
I'd say we got a motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned.